Call the meeting to order. First order of business is review and approve the minutes for October twenty-second. No. Ooh. For November nineteenth.
November fifth.
Where am I?
I don't know.
Oh, right there. For November fifth. I'm really with it today. Let's approve those minutes. How's that? Any changes or with them?
Nope.
If not, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't think so.
Okay. Perfect. Bid for culverts from Harold?
Yep, they're right there, yep.
Arrow Central out of Littleton, New Hampshire. Total bid is four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
And it's for so many culverts?
Uh, like, um, thirteen plus two plus one, sixteen. Yeah, and you got a quote from weed precast out of Randolph. And this one's for a total of twelve, and how many is there?
Looks like sixteen.
Even, twelve thousand even?
No, no, the amount, the amount of them.
Oh, okay.
The quantity of them. So the bid here is four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine?
Yeah, so.
For four less culverts?
Yeah, so. I don't know why they, yeah. Fifteen inch.
These are all different sizes.
Yeah, so they're, they quoted only nine fifteen inch, and these, they quoted thirteen. So I guess that being said, we'll go with Arrow Equipment out of Littleton. Nice.
Yep, four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Good.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
What was it? What's their name? It's way up, Arrow.
Arrow.
Arrow Equipment out of Littleton.
Equipment out of Littleton. I'll make a motion to approve, to accept their estimate, order these culverts from them.
I second that. All in favor? Aye. All right. All right. Next. Highway Department, no one's here.
Well, no, the next line says twenty-two six budget.
Budget, oh.
Yeah, Carrie might want to talk about it.
So this, we each have a folder, tried to make it as easy as possible. Revenues, expenses for highway and revenue expenses for the general fund. So this report shows budget twenty-two four, actual spent twenty-two four. Budget twenty-two five, what's spent today, twenty-two five. And then the expected budget for twenty-two six. Not everything is in there, of course, but the things that we knew. And the departments that gave us budgets, those were entered. Just, just with the understanding, you know, obviously, anything can change, but we felt it was easier to see the report with the numbers in it. And then we can make adjustments as we go and on Saturday.
Yeah.
But I wanted Jizz to have them now, so you could really look at them before Saturday and not be, not, you know, just make sure you understand how the reports go, so we can go right down through. And it won't be as long.
Sure.
Some of the stuff, like the passive insurance, I guess, you know, some of that stuff, I just use last year's figures. We'd never get that till, I don't know if we even get it in this year, but usually at last minute before we, we probably do get it at the end of December. So this is, anything that wasn't known, we just put in last year's figures, just to have a good chunk of a number in there.
Something to start with.
Yeah. Ambulance contracts in there, that they let us know. A few of the dues, they let us know. And then, like I said, the different departments' figures.
Everything's going down.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Going down. I wish.
So Mike, you're new to the budget day, but, uh, just try to wrap your head around it for Saturday.
Then everybody knows when they're coming and fifteen minute slots, right?
Yeah. Some of it will be quick and some will take longer, but. So we can just make our notes on these, so just make sure you bring these with you Saturday.
Okay, all right.
And then we can go right down through.
Sounds good.
And then anyone coming to present anything will come at their time and can talk about any changes.
So how many other budgets have you gotten?
Every ones, we didn't get fires, departments, plannings.
I just sent it to the planning commission.
Yours is pretty small and just like.
This morning, I basically every year just say the same as last year, or just as you feel needed.
I took out the eight hundred.
And made it last.
Well, I didn't.
I think it's two ninety-five.
Just do the difference of what we spend?
Yeah. Because we'll spend that.
And it will happen next year, or is there still going to be some time in the next six weeks to spend the two ninety-five out of this budget?
No, we're not going to have the plan done. I don't know what the, I guess, can we change the budget last, like, if we get a bill in December, or is this sort of?
Yeah, we still have this budget, so we still pay it off this budget and then adjust it.
I guess we'll see if a bill comes in, otherwise, yeah, we should probably put that difference in.
Okay.
Uh, but I do think, they said they were billing us monthly, right? But that was the first bill.
Yeah, that's the only one that we've seen. Well, what, well, once the two ninety-five's done, then there's no more bills.
Can you just bill us the whole amount? It makes it easier. Maybe I'll call.
It's not like it's a lot of money to.
Yeah.
But I can do that if we don't hear, if we get it spent this year, I won't budget it for next year, but if not. So that's, I think that was only two, was planning and fire department. So the rest, everything's in here. And that's it, that I can think of.
All right. Department upbeat. No, Arrow, no Highway. Treasurer?
So the current tax collection is complete, so it's now all in Carrie's hands for the collector of Dillingford Tax. Um, the cemetery had a meeting, um, we had talked to the auditors about, there's three accounts that never get used, can't get used, and the auditors had recommended closing them. And, um, because they're very old and the purposes for them have been met, they feel. Um, and so the cemetery commission last Thursday did vote to, um, move that money, so I'll be working on that.
Okay.
It's small amounts, and the one, I think, makes a penny or two a year, the other one, but you're reconciling all three of them. It's just.
Just a lot.
For a very small amount, under ten thousand, I think, combined for all three of them.
So it's a good thing to, you know, really wrap it up. Um, the check's ready for B and U, Bobby's gonna come pick it up tomorrow, I think you probably saw it in there. And a reminder that budget day is Saturday. Um, I'm just gonna go through the rest of my stuff. Maintenance, um, the gazebo is all newly wired and repaired for the lighting. He put an outlet up in the ceiling and two new light fixtures, and then fixed the, um, thing that determines day and night, so it will be on at night and off during the day. Um, so he was very efficient, and then there was an electrical box down there that we had always used. He changed that over and put a safe box on it to code. So that is all done. And, um, I was gonna talk about the odor in the downstairs, um, I talked to Terminex about it. And I just got a call before the meeting, they're, they were to come on Tuesday to see what this is about, and they called and said, no. They're not coming Tuesday, they'll deal with it in the spring.
Girl.
That's sad.
Yeah, said they have nobody in Vermont to do any work, and they're in the seacoast of New Hampshire, and they're not driving three hours to Vermont.
Find a smell.
So they're gonna call me again, but, um, to talk about two other things. I'm not getting the bills on time, and the other thing was, um, they come on Fridays to do their inspections when we're not open. And I know I had talked about that way back when. So those two things are being addressed.
Yeah.
And I will still try to get someone here, but, you know, maybe it'll just go away, but it's been here since last week. And we don't know what it is.
So one of the first times he came, they were still doing construction, the door was open and he walked in, and I said, what are you doing? We're normally not open on Friday. Oh, it doesn't matter, they schedule them that way anyway. So I told him that months ago, whoever the guy is.
Well, I, no, I went over the work hours with him, so. And then the, just a couple things on the grants, the USDA for the parking lot, um, you know, Mike, um, was great, sent another follow-up email to our person, she sent an email today a couple different times and not, was not relevant to our project. Um, I corrected her, and now we're just waiting. I mean, at least she's back to work, but we're not really knowing, so.
So it's the same lady involved, same?
Yes, it is, yeah. Um, and library, Patrick Shattuck from Royal Edge has emailed me and asked about, um, if the contractor they hired needs to be bonded. And, um, so, so he wrote an email about it, and you guys can read. And then I put stickers where it discusses bonds, so you guys need to determine if we need to or not, and I'll let him know.
And this is state funded?
Well, isn't it, department, isn't it federal? I don't know, Department of Libraries?
You should ask the.
Well, it might even be in the letter that she left.
I saw that bit.
It's a pass regen. You supposedly do Department of Libraries budget, so it is federal money, but it passes through Department of Libraries? So technically both?
Okay.
They should ask their grant manager first.
So would you think the state of Vermont already has the money from federal government?
We don't, it's based on expenditures, so we receive expenditures, pay them, and then we bill.
So what this is, is like an additional insurance policy for the contractor, I think?
Yeah.
They get a bond and then afterwards they send you a.
The bond costs like ninety-one hundred dollars for this project, and Patrick is asking not to get it bonded, because that nine thousand could be used towards a portion of the project. He's very familiar with the contractors they've chosen.
They're from the building, right?
Yeah. They're very confident in the contractors that they use. So, um, I'm not making that decision, so I'm leaving it for you guys to let me know, and I'll let Patrick know. And that's all I have.
Good. We'll have to work it over.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, I think if it's over a certain amount.
Five hundred thousand approximately is what the project is.
Yeah, we have this happen at the state, and, and, and I'm never really quite sure what trips it. I always thought it was the funding source, it's kind of bonded, state.
Yeah, like USDA, we had to have our, this bonded because of the USDA, but now.
That's why they should ask, like, the grant people, like, to define, if, uh, does our project require us to have a bonded contractor? Because.
I, I think he's saying it's not a requirement, but he wants to make sure that it's all in his email, that the town, um.
I think we gotta take it and read it.
So this is like.
Town policy.
Let's say the contractor owns the whole building, all the books are bonded, right? The building is Royal Edge's, right, but all that is town property then.
Yeah.
You know, they're, the contractor's insurance policy may not cover it all, so this would be your additional coverage on top of.
So that's gonna come out of the grant we have?
Yeah.
So he, they.
So he's just saying it's about nine thousand dollars that could be used more towards the fundamentals of the grant, but he wants to know if the town wants it bonded or not.
I think you should have a preference, because it's not our building. I mean, I know it's our stuff in there, I guess, but.
Yeah, I mean, our stuff is.
This is only affecting the construction.
How important are the boxes?
Well, don't we have insurance that covers that as well?
We have insurance. We have insurance on the inside.
If the contractor does, and they're insured, it's just gonna go out to them, and then theirs is gonna max out. It's like, this is additional insurance, basically.
So that being said, probably don't need it.
Probably what?
We don't need it.
Don't need it, okay, I'll let him know.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's somewhat of a, for a bond. If they require it, then for sure.
Yeah, covering their bases.
Who would tell them it's required? Who would say it's required?
Well, I guess, did USDA tell us, or is that part of?
Yeah, well, I mean, they, um, from Ruggles knew it needed, I think it was USDA that required it.
Prob, probably.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
So we know no one is requiring this bond? So what told him to find out? Like, did he?
He's asking if the town requires it. And I can't see that we have a policy saying that we do.
Yeah, and we live on the building. Our involvement is, we got the grant for them, right?
Right.
I mean. Yeah.
Do you think a motion needs to be made for that?
I mean, when's he gonna have an answer?
I think pretty soon.
Pretty soon, yeah.
I explained it to Tom when I saw him this morning, and he was leaning the same way as you guys, that we don't need it, but.
Well, I would think it's, we're, we're, we don't ensure.
Content.
Who says the contractor isn't insured here?
Yeah, and he's familiar with them.
They're fully insured, work in area, fully insured. For construction projects, blah, blah, blah. What does a big guy have to do?
Yeah, I've just been unfamiliar with the contractor gets the bond. State rights, state requires, usually the contractor to have the bond.
Yeah, and then at the end of the contract, you get a letter releasing the bond.
And it costs.
And it costs X percent of the contract total, but usually just for some part, part of the value, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know what we would have to get a bond, we're not doing that.
No, he's not saying us.
The contractor would have to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what?
It would cost nine thousand out of the grant money.
Why should it come out of the contractor?
Well, I think, I, yeah.
I mean. He's got a, usually a contractor has to go buy a bond for X amount of dollars.
Right, and that's what he said, it was about nine thousand.
Yeah, so he should have, when they bid it out, if it needed to be bonded, he should have told the contractor. It shouldn't come out of the money there, but I don't care.
Yeah.
I don't care, because it's their building.
Yeah.
It's not our building.
I mean, if they're comfortable with it, I would be bonded, I should be, I should.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
I think this.
Just tell them. All right, I will, it's perfect.
All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Carrie.
So like we said, the budget's been working on that, been working with Dan, spent a few issues around town on dogs, as usual. People parked in town right-ofways, town roads, that we're trying to address. And, so Dan's right, obviously, right on top of all that, does a good job. The other thing that we need to start thinking about, I kind of forgot about it, was the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of America, is, you know, for next year, and a lot of towns are doing something, I don't know what. And I've been asked a few times, J O just asked if the town, you know, they're asking all the towns doing something, and I said nothing was planned right now, but. So just to put that out there, if someone has ideas of some special thing that the town does.
Does that fall under planning commission?
Do you do a fun hole?
Wherever you want.
Put a flag at the parade?
Uh, John works as a Saturday.
The what?
It's a Saturday.
I mean, I got a feeling it's more than just that one day, I think it's like throughout the whole year.
Get some banners to put up.
Well, I was thinking of the little flags across the whole lawn, I mean, these are small things. I, I'm kind of anxious to hear what other towns are planning.
They'd probably sell some of those banners that we got on the poles.
Well, we put, yeah.
I mean, I know we got summer at the.
We have the flags that we, that go up.
Yeah, also, I just wonder, instead of welcome to Groton, celebrate, whatever, I mean, these things. Yeah, we, we should do something.
We'll think about it.
Yeah.
And up here, and at, at this facility, make it look, yeah, definitely.
Should we budget money for that, or?
Well, I know. I mean, I guess if we had an idea, it would be nice, but, um. Could come out of town, property maintenance or something, but.
Well, something to think about.
But yeah, so that's something that we should really think about.
Yeah.
Certainly, if we're thinking budget-wise, I, I get an email all the time for this giant tree to be planted.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we don't need trees.
I know.
Plenty of trees around.
It's like a fifty-foot something, and I'm thinking, oh.
Where, really? I'll, I'll talk to them, I'll get, will they pay for it to be planted?
I don't think that, I think.
It's for the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary? We have places to plant trees.
Well, I mean, we can do, you know, some red, white, and blue stuff around the gazebo, or different things like that through town, and. But if someone has an idea for some.
Something bad sticks out.
Yeah.
Pie sale, or pie event, very hometown.
Also, I guess we could, I mean, we know when typically all the parades and things are, so if, you know, it's a Saturday night, maybe we do Friday night, something here in Groton, or Friday afternoon, or something, I can think about things like that.
All right, I just wanted to throw that out there.
How old's Groton been around?
Seventeen eighty-nine, probably the same age as Vermont. Vermont is the two-fifty.
Seventeen eighty-nine, I think, or seventeen sixty-nine.
I think it's.
Yeah, it's on the thing in my office.
All right, well.
That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy?
Um, lots of business as usual, just working on projects and moving along.
Dan get all his pictures taken?
Pardon?
Did Dan get all his pictures taken for you?
Yes, yeah, we got, um, yep, he did them all except for the pond, and I've got them all updated, so they're the number one picture, whatever he took, I took the best one and made it the number one picture on the computer.
So we gotta wind someone up for next year to finish.
Well, we had the pictures from.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, so most of the pond was, is pretty updated. Yeah, I think we're done, I think we're good.
Okay.
So all the new pictures we can see, everyone can see on our end too, not just?
Well, I'm not sure until we do another, until Nimric does another update. So I'm not sure when, I'm not sure how they pick up the pictures, if they just pick them up once a year, or if that's something they can do.
Yeah, there was one today that I looked at that was still an old one.
And there are, there are some that the old picture was the better one. You know, if it showed the whole house and was a better picture than what we had.
Dan just sent it to me, and we looked at it, and Bobby had taken a picture of it, but.
But I've got those all done, and I've got most of the visits, the inspections that we've done, I've got that all, information all updated on the working grant list, so.
Good. All right. Dan's not here. Firing fast. Um, I don't know what anybody thinks, but I think we gotta, we gotta have a conversation with him about coming in front of us more than zero times in a calendar year, so. Um, I don't know how we go about that, but.
Well, you'll probably see them on Saturday.
Yeah, I'll have a conver, I, I mean, I just, we need to see them, I mean, we need to.
Yeah, or report at least.
Yeah, so send us something, tell us what's happening, what. I, I know they were coming every month, and we kind of pushed that, pushed them away, but I don't think we intended to push them away for the whole year, so. We'll have those conversations.
Yep.
Move forward, so. Good enough. Grants.
Got a couple updates. Uh, the USDA River cleanup grant, uh, we've got a letter from the state DA, was this today?
Yeah.
Today, um, so we've gotta write another letter to them asking for an extension, right? Can you prepare the letter and I'll write the stuff? Like, I'll, you give a letter, I have a letter.
You can write the letter, send it to me, and I'll put it on letterhead.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Like, yeah, yeah, or I guess I should figure that out too. Do you have a letter?
Uh huh, yeah.
All right, send me that. I'll just copy and paste this. We got that, so we're gonna respond and give them an updated timeframe. The timeframe I'm gonna give them is till September thirtieth, next year.
That's where the hard bills.
Yeah, yeah. It gives us the whole season to do it.
Yeah.
Why I can get a permit or else. Um, so that'll happen, uh, we, they want us to do it before Wednesday next week, and that will be the plan, uh, to get it to them by, before Wednesday, hopefully sooner. Um, other grants is the MERC grant, uh, I met with contractor here on Veterans Day on Tuesday. Uh, I spoke with the contractor that Garrett Aiken mentioned, they also came here during the visit, uh, went the, the bid, the bid visit.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they already had a quote prepared, so that was good. Uh, so I'm waiting on two quotes, I've got another contractor that's scheduled up in December, and we're trying to work them in for a sooner, give us an estimate sooner. Uh, and then the, the one thing with the fire department, I guess, is that it's got a heat pump hybrid electric, I guess. I don't know anything about that, um, or hybrid heat pump?
It was an electric and propane?
Electric, yeah. Uh, so, so I need to join in to do that, because a couple of these, I think, um, one of the contractors would do polls, but like, the ones that, uh, I'm getting bids from are mostly like those pellet ones, the pellet companies. So the fire department might be separate for a couple of them.
The bids are for just the furnace stuff?
Yeah. Or boiler, this is called a, I keep calling it a furnace and getting corrected. I had a couple contractors turn us down, said they're too busy. Uh, I have one I need to reconnect with, just in a second. Um, I figure by, we probably, I've been telling them we would do the work in the spring, which is favorable. They're happy to hear that, because they don't want to put too many projects on their plate. So I see the timeframe is like, we're reviewing bids on this, probably in the December, as soon as.
Now, did you do, Garrett had mentioned, was the propane, propane?
Only propane, not yet. We're gonna see what some of these prices are, I think, first, and then see about the only propane. Because I'm hearing that we're getting marked up pretty severely on what we got. Um, so I haven't looked into the only propane yet, but I figured, let's see what the estimates come out, let's see what their thoughts are, feasible, whatever else, and then take it from there.
So what are you thinking, just two propane boilers?
Well, that's what Garrett said, he had done MERC work for another town, and that's, that's what they did.
They have loved that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's what he said, I, I looked a little bit online, and I think it's kind of, they don't want that, but, um, I think if we have more reason to, that they would allow for it. So I figured to see what the boiler people say, the pellet boiler people say. Uh, the question came up about the attic, or the gym, because there's a couple options for what we can do in the gym. Like, we can get rid of the piping that the flags are hanging from, um, it's like a little bit more option, it's a little bit more, um, involved, but we have an opportunity to do things in that gym right now. Basically, you would put a hydraulic air handler in the attic, uh, that would then force air down, and also, we've turned those on, and they're so noisy.
Oh, I know.
And all the louvers are broken, so we're talking about replacing all of them, the new units are, um, much quieter, I guess. But the other option we could have, and I think it's probably too much, is would be these air handlers. An air handler in the attic, which we have more than enough room for. Um, I have. An air handler in the attic, which we have more than enough room for. Uh, I have one company is just gonna give me a rough quote on that. Just so we can.
Rough looking Nido.
Why not? Uh, one of the companies is really interested in connecting the fire department. Uh, I didn't mention this to the other contractors, but this one sales guy's really interested, he's like, that building's so close. And I was like, well, how are you gonna get the pipes over there? And he's like, I'm gonna dig a four-foot trench. I'm like, there you are. Good luck, you're not getting a four-foot trench over, over there from here. Uh, so he's gonna quote it, but I told him we're likely not interested, but he's like, it's not gonna be too difficult. I, I look at that building, it has that standalone furnace room, so easy to just plug in your furnace and then call it a day, so. That is like a little too complicated to get into, but, um, but yeah, things are moving along there.
Yeah, good, good.
Great.
Uh, I'll give a planning commission update. Uh, Emily Pratt has resigned from planning commission. So we know two vacant seats, uh, three potential candidates right now. We've got one or two that have expressed interest and I guess we'll hear from the other one before our next meeting. Um, probably come back, the planning mission will probably come back to here with a seven-person commission would be my guess for going forward. Um, Adam will probably recommend appointments, um, I would assume after our next meeting.
All right. Follow up, is he, all good there?
Open to public, anything?
Anything open to public?
You saw the letter from Sarah, from the library.
Yeah, yeah. Items for the next meeting?
All right, just budgets, we'll stay on there until we're done.
Will be, from now until March, right?
So we send the town a report.
Budget. All right. Anything else?
And maybe the, put the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary on there so we keep thinking about that.
Keep thinking about, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Oh, I was just, I had a couple of things, one thing from the last meeting I forgot to mention. I went to the Noise Pond Dam.
Oh, yeah.
Public meeting, so just, uh, just get it on the record, they're, um, rebuilding the dam up there or, or rebuilding parts of the dam. Where it overtopped, uh, last year. Uh, they haven't gotten the funding yet, uh, but there there's just, uh, some discussion around potential changes to the flood plain and I expressed our interest in not having any changes because our hydro garage is in the flood plain and, uh, and it sounded like they're gonna commentate that. We discussed, uh, so what, what happens is the dam is very vulnerable during construction. So like a big storm hits and your dam is partially taken apart, like that's a bad situation to be in, so. Uh, there's some discussion about, uh, having like additional, no, like working with the fire department. Um, so that, do like a test notification, like if the dam, something happened, make sure things go through to do like an exercise with the fire department. Probably at one of their regular scheduled meetings and just sort of give an introduction on what, what would, what it would be like if they got a call about a dam problem. Uh, those are the questions I brought up, are all just, what do we need to be prepared for as a town? Uh, and then the other one was our roads and they said that, uh, if they cause any damage to the roads, uh, cause they would be going up and down. San, San Potter, yeah. It's always confusing, cause they call it Noise Pond Dam. Uh, so San Pond Road, uh, if they cause any damage, they would, you know, take care of it, uh, and for us to.
What's our timeline? Just, do, do, they don't know?
I know, I do know, cause I work for, we don't have the funding yet, so it's, uh, it would be capital, funding, probably the project probably not start till late next summer and that might be just, uh, I, I guess, you, you know, it could possibly happen next summer, I think. But we don't have.
It's been pretty good.
As no legislature is January.
I, I think Tom was gonna, um, speak about his progress on the speed sign too, so that should be on the agenda for next time, cause he might have more progress than.
I was gonna say one more thing for, on, back under open was delinquent tax, I meant to talk about the compared this year, right at the start of delinquent tax and last year, it's almost exact. Within three hundred dollars, which is kinda funny. So it's about the same. So before twenty twenty-fives went delinquent, we were down to about forty-four thousand dollars. And now obviously it's a big chunk again, but already in the last week, I think we've had twenty or thirty thousand dropped off. People, people just forget.
Half a million or?
Oh, no, 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 it's two oh seven.
Two oh, yeah.
Total. And it's one eighty-six right now, just with people who've come in in the week.
Yeah, good, good.
So one hundred and forty-three thousand from just twenty twenty-five. And the forty from the previous year. So it's nothing extreme out of whack of, different from other years.
That's good, you never know in these times.
I know. I was surprised that it was about exactly as last year, so that was good in one way, but.
All right, very good, folks. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I'll favorize. Perfect.